What's up everybody? This is the poker coaching study session. Today we're gonna be looking at twenty big blind hijack versus big line. We're gonna do both positions. Let's start with the big bird. Oopsie.
Yeah, you gotta get rid of that board.
You have a three bet this? Ah, it's a twenty big.
I know that's short.
Not versus hijack. I don't think you just call versus button, maybe.
Yeah, it's. Oh, this board is close.
He's gonna probably bet big.
And we're gonna just fold.
We checks. Gotta bet.
Gotta bet?
Yeah, I think I like betting four one here.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm going for one or pot. I don't, I don't hate a pot bet, actually.
It's just because it changed now?
Well, we gotta.
No, you picked up equity. You picked up bluff equity. You give better Eric, better hands to fold like there's a lot, there's a lot of good reasons.
So you're gonna go.
I would go bigger.
Four?
I would go four one.
Five. Feels insane here to blow five and then in there. Okay.
Well, it goes better.
Okay.
Hey, he goes.
That you do your six has paid six a diamond. Let's go.
You probably go.
Yeah, are you going to the rebound button?
I've given up.
That a cashier button?
I mean, obviously the king of diamonds is better, but I, I think.
We also blocked a straight.
Bet five on the turn and he calls, are we?
Well, we don't block. Yeah, I mean, there's still other straights there that we don't block though, right? Like.
All right. So I had a couple of questions. How many queen X do you think he's checking back on the flop?
None.
First, okay.
But he's mixing. So he's a, he's technically supposed to be doing that.
Yeah, it's a bet larger check flop. So he's gonna have a decent checking range, I think. The thing is like we, but I bet that big on the turn. That's my shot. Like, I think we get to give up rivers or some dives.
All right, before we like meander too far down that rabbit hole, the other question was when we bet big on the turn. Does he continue with hands like ace, king, ace, jack? Like what? The, does he fold hands like king eight? Or ace eight now? Stuff like that.
Is the guy know? He's not gonna do that.
So I mean, I don't think folds. I think ace jack for sure folds.
Okay.
On the top.
So like. I mean, you're targeting like strong eight, strong seven.
If we shove here, you're calling with ace, king.
I'm not engaged.
I'm saying on the, no, but he asked if they call on the term with ace king. And I said, probably, I, I think they probably.
Oh yeah, I would say they probably do, but like that. So the follow up question is that like, okay, so. We can articulate a folding range now. So like, he's gonna fold ace, king. He's gonna fold ace, jack. He's gonna fold maybe ace eight. Ace seven? Those are like continues probably, right? Jack eight, jack seven? He doesn't have Jacks.
I mean, he's gonna fold some stuff for sure, right? Like. I mean, but he's got to defend. What's his MDF? He's got to call pretty wide, right?
We don't even that pot there.
Right. That's what I'm saying. So he's gotta defend like.
What queen X do we make him from? We don't really make him from any queen, queen X, A, A, X, sorry, because. He's having on only the stronger A Texas.
Well, we're not really targeting queens. We're targeting eights and sevens.
Yeah, but he's maybe like pocket nine. Many.
I think he's got to defend like seventy percent of his range when we jam.
We do. Actually, we do keep going, but we don't jam.
That's the weirdest thing. I've seen today so far.
Yeah, you can't just change this behind. See, that's.
Betting five seems so weird to me.
So I guess you'll bet five with your straight and not a flush? Or you're betting flushes five two?
Well, the whole range. The whole range is a pretty robust five size here, to be honest. Which is weird to me.
Is ace nine, king nine, or are they flushes? H five, king three, H two, king two, or they're all flushes, I guess?
The jams I would assume are flushes.
Yeah. So and we're gonna have a lot of straights here on the turn when we bet that big. So that straight stuff, when I guess.
There is some king six is getting at it.
Yeah, it just prefers the diamond of kings.
Yeah.
King of diamonds, but you know, like.
We had the six of diamonds.
So.
Difference in equity or E V if we shove versus betting small.
I think it was about point three. I think. I think.
I'm more interested in how it's constructing the range, honestly.
Like I said, I think it's point.
Actually, that's kind of huge. Four point four to point one, two.
Yeah, but that's just the first one, Joey.
Huh? I'm looking at the six of diamond combos.
Oh, nevermind. I'm sorry. The six of diamond combos. I mean, like. The bet five. Yeah, yeah, it's like points. It's point four to one point one, two.
All right. What did we accomplish with the five point five? Do we get an eight to fold?
That's a good question. I don't know.
Because he's having the good.
At least some.
One of them.
It's okay.
We're getting some sevens to fold.
Okay, well, look at ace kings. Okay. So look at ace kings. So ace kings are actually folding to this five, five at some, some.
Look at the eight of the ace king. He never adds it.
And he's supposed to raise bluff some base kings, which I don't think population is gonna do. So that's probably even more folds. Like, I think we're gonna get more folds out of this bed size than what this range might be showing.
Yeah, I would agree, Ken.
I thought a hand like bucket six without folded already, like bucket six, no diamond. I thought what?
Redrawing us.
Looks like most, most of the ranges sixes do have diamonds in it. It's just kind of sliver. So non diamond sixes.
The six kind of blocks. We're trying to say we have to.
To be honest, though, like, I don't know if there's too much merit in going five, five or twelve. Like it's trying to balance like their bluff raising range. Like all of this stuff, like he has so much that he's gonna turn into a bluff for set five. That's probably just not studied or balanced in actual play, right?
Yeah, that's what happening, right?
Yeah, that forty two point nine is. It, 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 it's probably closer to like ten or something and that call number is probably higher. And the fold number is probably higher. But you know. Um. It's just food for thought when analyzing this five verse five verse twelve. And like, yeah, he called and see like in reality, I feel like A seven there probably folds some of the time.
Falls the time.
So suited ace is at twenty. I think we'll do some jamming. I don't think the middling ones are gonna be prioritized. I think it's probably more polar. So this is probably a call in my book.
Right.
Where, where do you stand with like a king, jack suited there?
Rip it.
Um, I think king, jack suited. You got two competing things, right? You got a hand that does pretty well when you see five cards, but you also have the ability to close the action and see a cheap flop. So I think king, jack calls. Um. It's gonna be pulling more from like, okay, like your suited nines and suited tens, like the weak ones right there. Those get plenty of better hands to fold and. When they get called, you know, they're doing pretty successful. One thing I am screwing up here was. I thought ace, five, ace, four, ace, three. Would have been jamming, but it's actually still just pulling from the trashy offsuit ones.
Which is. Yeah, I definitely, I definitely jammed there with the suited ace.
Hmm, I see. I thought so too. It may be like we're a little deep for it. Um, you could lead this at some frequency, I think. I don't know if you want to do it with an ace, though. This, this might lead. It's kind of an attractive combo.
Yeah, one over to the eight.
Sure, it was to the eight. Oh, yeah. Dialer. Yeah.
One direct dangler to the eight.
So are we happy stacking off for twenty if we check raise and he, and he? Pounds us here.
I think when we play check, we just probably call.
I think I would as well.
I would agree with both of you. I think calling is gonna be the primary response there.
Ace high doesn't like to check raise much because like it's good again. It's good against a little hands.
Yeah, that's right, Louis. Like, do you really want to turn a winning hand into a bluff at this moment?
So what do we see here? Like, that's not really a thing in overall GTO, but the shorter we get and the more E P you play against. Like he can even leave on some nine eye boards.
Yeah, if they, if they don't, if they lack that in the offsuit portion of the range, like if they're not opening the offsuit nines, then like under the gun nine becomes playable as stock sometimes eight, right?
Yeah, I think you absolutely have to be against E P and short stack. And so what do we do now?
Uh, you just call. I'm fairly certain.
Yeah, it's a pretty big.
Or jam. Or jam, call or jam.
Push it to the limit.
Yeah, that's maybe why I like to jam because now we're like, okay, we're fucked.
Yeah, you probably have to let this go now. I don't know. It's pretty close. I overfold right here in game for sure. Yeah, maybe it's not an overfold. All right, the king six off suits. Um, I think we do pull some three bets from this region. I don't know if we do it at twenty and I don't know if we do it. King six versus hijack. I think this is.
Versus hijack.
Yeah, I think it's a call. I think if we do. We might pull like from king seven or eight.
I don't think there's a offsuit king stream that thing.
There may not be. Yeah, it's kind of simplifying the range to just jamming. Like if you, if you piped it up to twenty five, it might start.
Yeah, twenty five is the bottom where you have small free bets.
Okay, so that's where you start prioritizing these. So like, if there's. Any kind of risk premium adjustment, so like fifty percent of the field I C M, they'll probably start filtering in. And as you creep up, they start filtering in.
You three bet more at I C M?
Um, you're just gonna, you're gonna prioritize a small three bet strategy, not all in more shallow. So it's gonna be. As, as opposed to just. Kind of running your equity, right?
Who can lead here?
Uh, yeah, I think so. Ooh, that's gin. All right, do you, you don't check it. I, I would go small again, to be honest. Like you have a really good spade blocker too. Yeah, I mean. I, I guess four is still small.
I'm just thinking that's how we getting this in. That's how I always think in game, you know?
Well, Louis, like, um, it, it's kind of like hook, line and sinker. If he has an ace, right? He just doesn't get away. Like you, you got like the effective nuts. So like his over pairs are on the hook. For at least one street, his ace is on the hook for all of it unless the. The river is just something. Even if the river is bad. Let's say the three of spades comes on the river. He still has to put his ace in, I think. Yeah, he just put it in now. And he doesn't get to fold. Uh, we can let this go, I think, yeah. Hmm, this is probably a theory. This is like the line. I think it may be a folds, but. I could.
Eight, six.
It's calling.
We could, we could wider when they shallow.
That's right. Yeah, you're right.
I thought it was twenty five that we called now. Readable, yeah, like.
Eight, five is the floor here. Yeah.
If this I C M, do we fold?
Well.
Yeah, I think you do.
Like, I'm not, I'm not sure how much tighter you are when you're shadow work because obviously you want more chips for fold equity, right?
Offsuit in general, you make it two tip.
Two pair, okay.
One tip suited.
You just call here.
You don't raise? No.
I don't really see merit in raising that much.
Cause this is always happening. And then yours, right? You block it.
I don't know if we block with like fourth pair. I would probably just play check. Now it does. It blocks one. This feels so transparent, like he's just gonna have like a, you, you're kind of setting yourself up for a.
I don't know. What's up, party people? What are we doing today?
Hey, Danny. Um, this is twenty big blinds hijack versus big blind. Playing from the back foot here. And you probably get better fives to fold, but that's about it. Maybe it's value versus ace highs also.
Like black betting fourth pair. So. Seems like we're black betting range.
Uh, you are betting range to some extent right here. You like, you, you just don't really check.
Block bet or jam?
Yeah. I guess it's just the nature of that seven. That seven is, uh, the seven is just such a blank, right? Like it doesn't come. Well, it completes eight, six. Which is like not really a combo in the hijack range. So we just kind of, uh, we go kind of bananas. It looks like.
Yeah, especially at twenty bigs like hijack. Open those.
Jamming like every king. Yeah.
Wait, what's the line? It went bear.
Check tiny bet, call, check, check.
Yeah, when, when it goes check, check, you get to jam. Add your shadow, you get to jab like all your top pairs. Cause it's just like the nuts essentially, especially here.
Okay, but. Can send up somebody explain this?
What?
Explain what?
Best small call turn king pretty bad for us. Check, check. And then we just like block.
Well, the king, I mean, is the king. Is the king really bad for us when he checks it back on the turn?
He never checks a king.
So capped right now. I mean.
Yeah.
I think when he caps himself, we're getting thin value from these high. And then with our better stuff or blockers, we're just jamming over.
Hmm, I think the king is bad and. Up until the point he decides to check the turn.
Right. It's like king, king is gonna check. That's it.
He's not checking the turn very much.
Yeah, so like he's, he like, like they were saying, he's capped himself and then the seven is an equity completing card for your range.
Yeah. So he's just always gonna double barrel on a king here and then we just fold.
He, well, do you?
Reality.
I mean, we might call this cover because we don't have a diamond.
And you have a straight blocker.
Eight, five off. Oh goodness.
Yeah, I thought it was close.
Close it. It is pretty close. Yeah. That's one.
It just folds days chat.
We call.
Heck, fold, I think. Especially against the big.
He could put one out there at fold.
I mean, we're too shallow to float wide.
Do you jump?
No, I don't think you jam.
This every time.
Versus hijack.
I think, I think, yeah, I think the suited combo we cool up. Oh, no, we jam. Yeah, yeah, suited. Yeah.
It's like the, if it was low jack, I wouldn't jam though. I don't know.
So if George jams into you. You can call lighter because he has too many king, queen.
I, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah, indeed.
I think you just fold. I don't know, man.
I think we're supposed to call one.
One big blind bet here.
About a raise.
We got some pair draws like some people would say here.
I think, uh, raising is not gonna be great. You're blocking the folds.
We gotta hit the pair draws. That's not a pair, but that's something we can do with. We can leave here.
Yep. Just lead small.
Yeah.
Does this hand benefit from leads? Yep, it does.
It's like a range lead, I guess.
Oh, I think it's a bad idea after, after some thought. Uh, maybe this was not a good idea.
He's got a. Bucket queen eight here. He's bluffing us. All right.
All right, you can, you can pile those.
Of course. All the bears, right? Oh, he snaps and gets a bunch of jacks.
This is a call.
Yeah.
This is a fault.
Just open muck the flop.
Do you? Okay, okay, okay. Do we, do we, uh, lead small maybe here sometimes? I don't know.
No.
Yeah.
All right, show it down. You're gonna win somehow.
Bet one.
Why would you bet one instead of?
Get value from king high. I'd check.
I'm checking.
You could even bet bigger than one, I think here. I think you could bet two and a half here.
And be sure it's a check.
You guys missed the all in here.
Yeah.
So, so what is the merit for all in?
Merit.
I have no.
Okay, six to fold.
He checked back ace three times.
Uh, this is a call from what we saw.
Probably just because we blocked the set on the river.
Yeah, I, well, I was gonna say like, he's gonna have a lot of like tins and jacks and like middling pairs and things. And you do block the rivered full house, so. I think that's probably where it's pulling from.
Are we surprised that he checked an ace three times?
Not really. He's gonna have some in that range and like, that's a pretty trashy ace.
So that's gonna be a call. Right?
But he, but he had a pair.
You do have to call.
Nope.
Uh, you raise, okay. You got the overcard.
I was thinking raise, to be honest. Have you got got your?
I would have raised ace five.
Ace six, I think, has the same properties almost. It's just a, a backdoor instead of direct equity.
Oh, look at gloves. Look at the gloves or it's found gloves. It's like, yeah, why not?
Well, yeah, it's a semi bluff. It's got direct equity.
These news, king trading news. To get better aces and kings to fold.
Okay, then look five deuce. You, you were mad at me for raising five deuce the other day.
I was not mad at you and the difference is you were also like final three tables or something in a tournament.
It worked though.
It did work.
I'm still stuck on the last hand. I wanna go see that river strategy after this.
What's wrong with that?
What? He didn't bet the river. What? I'm so confused.
No, I think it, I think it's because he has the six, so he's trying to get value from a six. And when he bets that he blocks the six.
No, a four came in. What are you talking about?
That was in order for six, no.
It was ace, queen, queen. Three, four.
How often is it gonna go check, 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 check like that, Danny? You shouldn't worry about it. You should focus on lines that happens all a lot, like. Flap save it and then what?
It's a common line still. I mean, I just wanna know, cause I would always bet river with his hand and I wanna know like, what is it like the minority strategy to check? Is it the majority strategy or like, I just wanna get some sense of. What's going on there? But we don't have to.
I think the, um. I don't, I think it's pretty uncommon to check back a, an ace.
Five, three, that's what I'm not finding five, three.
The pair board, like everyone is gonna see that there, no?
Yeah, one big line.
No.
I think he's like mixing and then who cares, right? If he finds a check with one of it, uh, one of them, who cares?
No, on the river, on the river.
He's mixing a lot from the flop.
Now, this is a lot of checks. I just bet one big line of range that, yeah. That, that is a big, big mistake.
You're way ahead or way behind. There's no need to bet. Um, okay, so. Okay. Huh? I mean, ace three makes sense. We block the calls. Ace four makes sense. We block the calls, but ace six, it's half and half. All right. All right. Not too crazy.
Yeah.
Thank you.
These, these frees, like six, three, five, three. Four, three. He's, I probably just cool this, but.
Yeah, this is, uh, this is turning the bottom pair into a second pair into a bluff kind of thing, which is kind of. Yeah, I don't, I don't find a lot of the bottom pair, second pair stuff either.
I think this whole square here just wanna get better aces or kings to fold. And then it has extra equity. And it doesn't.
He's focusing on the, uh, yeah, I think he was just focusing on the pair part, though.
That top pair. Then you already have a bunch of the strategy. The rest is what, what, what's this? What's this? I've three, five deuce.
Those should be back. Dory.
Five, four off.
Four, some five is dangerous to the.
Six, four.
Three, two.
So, okay, it's kind of these gut shots that you're kind of stuck at this stack depth that you don't really wanna call. You raise them more often, I guess. Okay, so raise a bunch of straight interaction stuff. And high lows that can get better aces or kings to fold. Like this.
Super cap would be cool. We had like no queens.
Oh, then, then what? Okay, so we know the first note now and then what? Uh.
Maybe we'll check.
Bet three.
Yeah, bet small.
Or bet six.
Yeah, our equity, we, we now have a gut shot, so I think.
If we check raised, if we, I think if we check raised, we bet. If we check called, I think we check.
So if you, what kind of bed size would you pull?
Very small.
Cause I think I would check. Wanna go for three?
I like three or check.
Yeah, no, that's true.
We check.
Can't check. We check raised. We got a good card for us. If we, we just looked at the check raise range, right? But there's a lot of fives in there. It's six, four, six, five, five, three.
I didn't, yeah, I didn't remember.
I mean, go to top pairs as well. We bet smaller. Okay.
Uh, yeah.
Yes.
Does say it at the top of the screen, Gavin.
Okay. I'm raising.
I don't think raising is super good here.
I call here.
I think there's gonna be a lot of calls here too. I wouldn't, I think it's probably gonna raise a little bit, but I think it might call more.
I'd rather raise with, uh.
Calls a lot.
My raise.
You raise your a sex and your straight draw stuff, probably.
Some of the ducks maybe.
But why, why would you wanna rate? Why would you wanna raise like a, a weak jack here? Like, what are you accomplishing?
Yeah, it's a pair board. You're on the big blind, so usually.
Yeah, but there, there's no logic behind that. Like, why would you wanna raise it? Like, what are you trying to get folds from?
Spewing heuristics at you.
King, queen.
I mean, it's also paired aces, really. That's not the same as like. Jack two, two.
Well, he probably still can't fold like some pairs, like, uh, I mean, probably can't fold kings, queens, right? Tens.
So like, Jack four here. I can make sense of Jack four here, cause Jack four is going to put like better jacks kind of in the box. Like, um.
Okay, it still stands. Mostly they found by raising in general. Now, what are these flubs that we don't raise? Oh, ace, ace. Paired aces. Well, if you look at them, your majority raises them, no?
No, it majority checks them.
It's because the jack is high enough that you don't need protection.
Oh, I'm sorry. It, but I'm sorry. Pardon me. A majority folds them.
Yeah, majority falls and then when it defends, it's still defending mostly by raising.
So he doesn't get to fold any under pairs.
On high cards. On a high card.
That's the exception. Really high connected. Which I mean, uh, this is what we got. We got this one here.
He's a jack, yeah.
Like, think of ace, ace, king. If you have a king, you, there can't be an overcard, right? So normally you're raising partly for equity denial and just don't need to at that point.
Hmm. All right. Alright.
But then the queen, you need a little more, the jack a little more still, and then, yeah, the lower it goes, the more you do it.
So. Oh.
Also, here, our straight draw stuff has. Good equity to call, sometimes, like, we don't really wanna raise king, queen. King ten. It's just like queen ten can be a decent one.
We, we check called, I think we gotta check.
Yeah. I don't think, uh, leading ace, ace is ever gonna be good.
We'd probably call this down.
Yeah, I think we have to cool, cuz we got most made.
Ugh.
Already mixing on the turn, right?
I think we fold now.
Yeah, I think we fold now.
This is, this is just like ace, queen or something.
That wasn't the river we wanted.
What kinda river was good for us?
Yeah, a jack maybe, like, I don't know, like, I just.
A four of hearts.
I just, we usually have an ace, so like, when he goes bet, 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 like, and we have aces at our range, it can't feel good, right? Like, I'm out.
Can we call if it's a four of hearts?
Oh, you just have to woe.
I don't think so. Cuz we're already mixing turn.
The thing is, we raise some of our aces, and then. Are we not gonna have to cool some, some jacks? Maybe not?
I guess we just want the jack or the seven.
Cool, cool jack, seven.
Jack seven's a call now.
It's nice to block the, the boats and stuff.
How often has there been a double pair of ace board, the line goes bet, 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 and you call down, they show up with something worse than the ace?
Yeah, yeah, true, that, that, that is.
Are they Russian?
How many times would you remember it happen more than once?
Actually, I pulled up a triple barrel bluff with an ace, ace, king board last night. So.
Um.
I remember.
And you're playing on global too much, you forgot what bluffing is.
Fair.
Ain't no Russians on global.
Shot through the heart. Fold.
I, I don't know, it's just.
Do you fold?
Fold.
Ooh, we need some extract. Damn, we got blocked.
He had a pair, Louis.
Oh, no, we didn't get blocked.
Oh.
Fold. No, 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 call, what are you doing?
Oh, it's in there. Oh, slowed down.
Yeah, I was wondering if the, eight high, but it's a high jack, so I think we're allowed to some.
We can't plow the straight here, I don't think.
Yeah, there's no straights, yeah. I think we're checking mostly range here.
But he's not opening off suit eights.
There are some leads there, you got.
Okay, Joey.
I mean, this hand led almost ten percent of the time.
Yeah.
Do we, do we check raise? No.
No, why?
EB's.
Raise here.
EB's not much different. Yeah, if we have a spade.
Lee was, do you check?
Big bet. He'd.
Oh, he big bet?
Yeah.
Six has paid, Louis check.
I think Louis saw that there's some textures where you do check raise, middle pair, bottom pair. And now he wants to do it on every texture.
Yeah, need a spade, oh, yeah.
Six, spade, ideally, but the four as well. You need a spade, Lewis.
Just rip it. Donk it.
Yeah, I think don't.
Uh.
Old school.
Alright, so, would you be more likely to donk a double flush board? Like this, of this texture, or one where it was like the seven of clubs that came in or something?
The latter.
Yeah, I think the donk would make more sense if it didn't complete some equity for this guy. So I would play check call, I would play check here, I think. Just because his response, I think, with some of his marginal holdings, like, if he's got, like. The nine, ace nine of hearts or something, I think he's just gonna pile it in your face when you donk.
Oh, I wanna bet call. I'm a psycho.
Call, I don't think you.
Oh, yeah, I can.
Alright, Danny, you spew your chips.
Watch me, watch me, watch me.
So, Devon is not good, right, but is it a five? With a five.
Well, check, check the seven of clubs, just.
Yeah, I think another suit, the seven would be.
I think the double flush draw is kind of important to, like, our range construction here. So like, now it's more elevated.
A little bit.
Not by, not by a ton, right, but like, there's definitely.
Percent to. Yeah, five percent.
It's like a fifty percent increase.
Obviously, something like a five diamonds would be better.
Five of diamonds.
Yeah, I mean, five of diamonds is like the nuts for it, like, now it's like jumped up another ten percent.
Then would that deuce be good?
Uh, probably not, because it interacts with ace.
Four and three are great.
I don't think a deuce is gonna be as good, just cuz it's gonna be. No, it is, I'm wrong, it's even better.
But not for this hand, this hand prefers the five.
Do we, do we have a check jam? Actually.
Uh, that.
Would a six be good? I think so, right?
Um, not for this hand, I don't.
Better than a seven, right? A little bit?
Pretty good.
Yeah, still.
It connects better with the four and the three.
Not great for this hand. But.
Oh, we don't dunk when we make two pair, we just check jam, huh?
Why, why is there a difference between the five of diamonds and the five of clubs?
There shouldn't be too much of a difference.
There wasn't, I thought there was, yeah, okay.
We looked at the seven of hearts versus the seven of clubs.
There shouldn't be too much, heart spade is gonna be different. Because of the nature of, uh, how it completes and brings in equity.
Yeah, a call here, right?
Uh, you definitely have to continue, I think. Yeah, it's like not even close. Um, yeah. Nice. Do you continue here?
No.
Probably not, I don't know.
I think this one's out.
Okay, okay.
I think four, three is the bottom of the suited.
Uh, yeah, you can fold that. You, you continue with this.
Yeah, any suit. That'd be a check raise, I think.
Uh, call.
I think you're raising.
Hmm, first, that's small bet I might raise.
I think.
Call, call.
I'm just calling. I wanna raise like ace five, a diamond, a spade.
Uh, yeah, I was thinking the small ones and the high loads.
I just thought we'd, we'd, we'd raise, cuz we got, um, five high, and we wrap around the four.
So look at five, three. Look at five, five, three, six, three.
Hearts.
Backdoor is the one, okay, yeah. So the actual flush composition's just gonna be like high-low.
This is like the spot I had, and then I had the, I had the hearts, then I raised. Yesterday, I had this spot, I raised tobacco hearts, but it seems like. It's not doing it with the hearts, man.
Queen, jack. Yeah, it's like the queen X, right, the one under the king? Does a lot.
Yeah.
Oh.
You probably just call, I don't know. Maybe you go, maybe you click it or something.
Pile it. Pile it.
Why would you pile? Why would you pile over a click?
It's color raise.
Why would you click over a pile?
Cuz you get more calls from marginal continues?
Man, what do you do on a spade river then?
Spades, yeah, that, that's what.
You put all, you, you put all your chips in and, and beat a, and beat a set, I don't know.
I think we're gonna go all in.
I, uh, often, the solver does these weird raises for like. Making the SPR like one-fifth on the river, and I just don't. I don't know, I don't see how practical that is versus just jamming. Some spots, I agree, but like.
I used to think that way, I used to think that way, too.
Ah. I have ways to go before I reach. Galen levels.
I was just called an idiot a couple of times before it really sunk in.
There are situations where it makes sense to me, but in that one, I don't really get it.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know. Maybe you give some, like, naked spade a correct price, then. And it's better, get a little more value.
Or you get someone on the other side of the keyboard that says, this makes no sense, why would you do that? I'm all in.
Wow.
Ace, king on a ace, it's ace, king, seven, two-tone, this is a big bet board. I don't find a fold here, I don't think, but maybe I should.
Yeah, I, I would never be folding. Here.
Is it ever a bluff? Is it?
Alright, I'm breaking out the big bets against you guys.
It's just gonna be hard to continue with this compromise.
The bluffs are like. Queen, jack, queen, ten, right?
Uh, yeah. Yeah, those make good sense.
With a spade, probably, yeah.
Lewis, we got some feedback from you.
Just a bit. So king, jack is calling pure, and then once you get under that, it's all the mixing. King, queen, and king, jack. Huh. Is it mixing, is it like wanting a spade with the kicker, or what's the, how's it mixing those offsuit kings?
Spade, all day.
Spade is pure and the others are.
Should be for spades.
Just need a spade. Okay, never mind, we fold. Jack eight. Hmm, yeah. Then we'll get this kinda thing.
Check call, I think.
Uh-huh.
I had check raise. Fan bets us.
Right.
Hmm, maybe raise a super small one.
Here.
Yeah.
Need a spade to raise.
Yeah.
We do.
To be blocking his continues.
Oh, not even. We just call.
The Louis Law, call your straight draw.
Well, add this SPR, right?
Yeah, that was against button, but it. I mean, it makes sense, still.
It's a cross spade, was it easy to beat?
Well, we're gonna call here, or what? My role?
No, 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 no.
I fold.
Fold.
Oh.
I don't even think it's close.
No, no.
Point, point four nine.
Lose fifty big blinds a heart.
Wanna go all in?
Is this one getting in there?
Call.
Uh, I think it calls, maybe four.
It's four, yeah.
Four, five, six, maybe.
Anyone wanna go all in here?
I wanna go all in twenty percent of the time.
I don't think the wheels do it, I think it's the one, like, five, six, seven.
Yeah, we saw it clearly.
Seven.
Five.
Oh.
Six.
Really?
Yeah.
Six and seven?
Yeah.
Seven, eight, I think it was.
That's like the, the opposite of normal.
Yeah, it, it, uh, we had seen some, uh, spots where on the cut off and button it calls, uh. Ace, six, ace, seven. But.
Wanna lead here, Joey? Would you lead here with the three of spade in your hand?
I just think that the equity might have shifted our direction with the.
You need the ace, Joey. Maybe ace has paid, the queen has paid, the king has paid.
It may have shifted our direction, but our hand does not.
Queen has paid. Jack has paid, or any jack, actually. Any ten, so it's more like straight things.
Hmm. Were we checking all our flushes here?
No, mixing.
Uh, okay, not all, but a lot of them.
So, spade. Mixing.
Look at all that check.
Checking it out.
That is sexy.
Yeah, you don't block any of the high spade combos, which are the ones that our opponent has.
So you check flushes, cuz they're supposed to value bet at seven there, like, that's not happening.
They may still stab some stuff.
No, I think the seven was a bluff.
Check call.
Regardless, they didn't have a spade, and they bet a pair of sevens, in real life, I don't think that's happening very often.
Right, but they'll find other bets where they might be supposed to check back.
Do we get to lead this?
If it was a lower card. The seven pair, the six pair.
The five.
The five, but not. Well, it's.
Even on mono.
Go, go check.
I think cuz it's mono.
Raising, we, we're raising the flushes. On the flop. So.
It, it, it had, I'd say twenty-five percent lead.
Yeah.
Twenty-six.
Hmm. So.
Uh, call?
Who I found here, but.
Oh, no.
Okay, okay, okay. It's just the ten, right?
Yeah.
You can let the ten go.
Oh, he had a boat.
We kind of block, uh, where his bluff, some of his bluffs are gonna come from. And then, uh, on this.
And this thing is? Oh. Okay.
Tom. I'd go in. Could be that it calls some. This particular.
Raise to six.
Yep, eh. That's never a play.
Anyone else wanna do?
Eight percent of the time.
Anyone wanna call here?
Like forty call and, uh, or thirty-five call and sixty.
I think if, every, every pair in the range jams a hundred percent.
Yeah, I know, I'm trying to get somebody here. Nine, five, this is the nuts, right?
Mm-hmm. Where do our yellow sizes come from as a bluff?
You would? I thought eight, eight, five was well in there, not nine, five?
Nine, five.
Nine, six.
It's two gapped.
It took a person.
Okay, okay, okay.
Triangle of doom, oh, we don't have any, okay.
So fold.
Oh, we don't need a small raise, cuz we're just flatting aces, huh?
One.
I think the small raises start coming in at twenty-five, Danny, is what we saw earlier.
Okay.
Unless you're risk premium adjusted.
Yeah, we need to do more uh, ICM stuff.
Take it down, take it down.
Wouldn't mind saving a half hour today for squeeze ranges again.
Cause when you get deep, like a lot of this becomes irrelevant, and then I'm just kinda lost.
Well.
Yes, suited nights jam, but I don't think it's this one.
Like this hand here, even if you're very deep. You're, you're gonna be stuck here.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
Even if you're a final two, three tables. Like the difference is gonna be like here, I think it's a very heavy raise, right? Whereas on a final three table, it's probably more of a call.
Yeah, I think that's right.
Do you like just not check raise at all then?
I would still, I think I would still raise that one deep in a tournament, it's more like the pre-flop stuff, I don't know how, how it gets reshaped.
Cause I had that spot where it was kick high, and I was just like, oh, I'm gonna be check raising my king, so I need some bluffs.
Then to.
At the end, it's very simple, you go suited aces. Suited kings, and then you can add the Lewis special, the queen six suited.
The challenge, the, the challenge with it is Louis, like um, all of these post-flop sims that we study are chippy V. So everything you've seen here in theory is like chippy V stuff.
Yeah, so what do you do post not chippy V? I don't know.
You call more.
You, 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 you play the same strategy, but you take it easy.
Cause if I was there and I got like my top pair, I'm just like, I really don't wanna see a fucking overcard, you know?
Well, it's like I was telling you, like uh, you just take a lower variance strategy often, like. You, you check raise more equity-driven combos, you check raise a little bit less, especially, you just have to be more respectful.
Risk premium.
It's just like nine high board, I got top pair, second kicker, it's just like, there's so many bad cards.
Yeah, I know.
Think of how their opening range, like if they're opening tighter, then they're more overpair heavy than they normally would be.
The way I see it, Lewis, it's just the. Like if the, if the, the other guy has a skin, he's gonna probably continue, right? And then. You don't want the bad thing to happen, because it's ICM, so you move everything one notch, if it's a very small, it's probably just a call. If the raise big, it's probably just a raise small, you know? Then you move down your frequencies.
Yeah, you shift more toward like your best value and your best bluffs, and then the other stuff, you just uh, call more. Fold more.
Check, check on the turn, one big line, or no? No. Oh, look at this.
Alright, you win, oh.
I guess can. What?
You don't win, I win. Alright, you win.
Five, three. Make it five.
So like deep in a tournament, this is just a pure fold for sure.
Uh, I don't think so.
I've got a, I've got a comparative. If you just message me later.
Yeah, yeah, pre-flop, pre-flop. I'll message you later.
Well. Oh, my goodness. And then one calling two barrels there?
Oh, no.
I'm not, especially because I got a heart.
I think. You wanna have a heart.
Do we open rip?
No.
No.
No, I don't think.
You guys sure?
No, no, not on the backdoor.
He's gonna blast with.
Map him all, map him all.
All in, hope to win.
It'd be shown the five, three, yeah?
Alright, in game I might jam here, but I don't, it feels close.
We jam with ace ten suited. I'll be cooling down here.
And how about in the offsuit branch? Oh, we talked about it, say six, seven.
It's jack. Five, six, seven.
Alright, I'm gonna make ace ten too much then.
Anyone raising here?
Yeah, I'm jamming ace nine on the, like, on the off.
Completed equity on the board, we got a nine.
Your call, okay.
You guys, and you're completed equity. Even if it's king nine eight, I'm never raising.
One big blind.
Yeah, I might, I might. Uh, yeah, I'd, I'd bet.
This is a blender.
Oh, the big bet.
Four liner, we got four.
Yes.
Alright. Just wanted to think for a second.
It's a four liner, Danny, you don't have to.
Alright. In game, I don't have to think, but here I have to think. I'm playing a robot.
We can put it.
He's too good.
Some spots require a robot answer.
You know, we, we, we block a ace, jack, you know?
Check call.
Check and fold.
Ah, about we fold, maybe we.
Call, call. Oh, it's folding?
Uh, there's two gradeways, the flush draw, we have none of it, and then he signs up, so I mean.
It's on straight interaction.
Oh my goodness, I missed the lead here. It's a. Very heavily. Yeah, I don't like this board too much, I would prefer six, five, three, six, five, four.
It's six highs.
It would be better if we had at least a spade.
Now we should blast it, right? Six. Anyone going seven?
He might go all in.
All in?
Yeah. You might just rip it.
Seven big lines, if you pay seven big lines, we're gonna be super happy.
I wanna go smaller check.
I don't think we ever go small, I think it's gonna be their sticks or a jam.
You bet small on the turn, we done, this is a great turn, we, and we hit it. I think we re-black. So it's five or seven, I think five is better. Yeah, five is better.
Uh, all in.
All in is a thing. Everything's a thing.
Gens, all in, okay, snap this guy off.
Right, he's got queens.
Oh my goodness, jacks. I'm sorry to my investors.
Yeah, I just lost it, but I clicked on my extra button.
Check, but three. Is this a raise?
Yeah, I think you gotta raise.
I don't know.
Yeah. Do you raise without a spade here?
Yeah, I think I raised all my queens here, at least some frequency. There's a lot of turn cards we're gonna hate. That just goes all in a lot. There's a lot of turns we're not gonna love, it's tough. Pair, we're sure.
You know, we got to go with this. Some frequency, some frequency, especially with the spade.
Our best queen. No, yeah, they're all raising.
We jack called. Right, it's like, now it's like sucky. That's really sucky. You try to check, I think, dude. Maybe I bet one and fold, I don't know.
I think it's a black bet, turn one, check, check.
It might be, I don't block that enough, I find myself getting myself in bad spots by not block betting, but I wouldn't bet this, I mean. Yeah. Like, I'm just folding, honestly, to a bet.
Oh. Well, look at this.
It's a fold.
Fold.
Eight, four.
Yep.
Yes.
This calls, honestly, I usually fold.
I would fold to the low jack.
Yeah, I know it calls, I just fold it anyway.
If we go with the queen three, we got on this.
True.
Oh, we have a spade.
See queen three.
Do we ever check raises?
Yes, I think we do ever check raise.
We check raise on this board.
I raised this the other day.
Maybe with the queen of hearts.
I think it was ace, jack, ten.
Even with the queen of spades, we called.
Uh, would have worked.
I don't know about that, George, I think he's, he's going so fast, like we're not even looking at anything.
I'm looking for something interesting, actually, do you guys wanna do the hijack now?
Well, how about queen of spades with that hand?
Yeah, we could do the hijack.
Yeah, definitely, Ken, if we have the queen of spades, we were raising all in, we saw it, you were right. Did you not see it?
Oh, no, the last, you just folded, the ace, king, jack, or whatever.
Oh, this one?
Yeah, what are we doing, if we have a queen of spades there?
I suppose we call also again.
Raise or call?
It gets the raise, that combo only, the four spades, no good, queen of spades, good.
Yeah. You guys wanna do the hijack, or we continue on the big line?
I would like to do squeeze ranges at some point.
Please, we can do that right now.
I'm out of practice.
We could do, you know what? Can we do squeeze at twenty big lines?
Uh, I prefer forty plus.
Why?
Well, twenties are gonna be all ends or. Twenty, you're gonna be all in or fold.
Do you know what the squeeze of twenty?
Top of my range.
Uh-huh, you don't.
Very linear, I'm gonna guess.
It's more fun when we do get to play a little post-flop.
To be fair, uh, Ken's answer was pretty good, Louis.
Which was, what was it? What about king, jack suited? What about king, queen?
Call a king, clean off, slam king, jack suited.
I mean, you could spend twenty minutes, I don't know.
No, 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 uh, we're good, um, look at this.